Doing okay here? I'm jumping around to make sure all is well.
We're looking for Paige's presentation, D is Baptist Encampment, so I'm gonna see if I can run that for her. Let me get ready to share that, and hopefully this works just right.
Okay, I'll sit here for a minute to make sure we get it going.
Please, that would be great.
Thank you, I've already pushed record.
Thank you. Get back to our room. Paige, because I'm sharing it and it's not coming up in this particular room, let me get here. Okay, now I'm back in the room. Share my screen, and let me... I think this is what you're expecting, and can you see it Paige?
Yes, I can.
Great, okay. Thank you for hitting record Sharon.
We got it?
Are you still with us right now?
Okay.
Sharon, are you still in the room D at this time?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. I just wanted to comment that if I'm running the presentation, that I don't believe I'm also able to watch the chat at the same time. So maybe Paige, if you could look to see if you have any questions by chat, I won't be able to see them to announce them for you. Nor the hand raise, if you don't mind.
Okay, yes, I can keep an eye on that.
Okay, super, thank you.
Okay, and we are recording this one, so I'm gonna go to another one, you guys let me know if you need anything, gotta bounce around a little bit, but I'll be back.
Great Sharon, thank you.
Thank you.
Paige, I know you're looking to see if any members of the public join in, but if you'd like to do a dry runs, quote, presentation, just to be familiar with it and me with your page, I'm happy to do that, and if someone comes in, we'll just jump back to the beginning, or so, that's just an option for you.
Yeah, we can do that.
All right.
Okay, so we are here proposing an amendment to Baptist Encampment Road, if you'd like to go to the next slide please.
Yes.
So this amendment is located in the northeastern part of the Houston ETJ, and it's in the southwestern, the southeastern portion of Montgomery County. There we go. So, um, the request that we are making, first of all, is to delete the major thoroughfare and major collectors that are shown here. One is labeled as Community Drive and one is unlabeled. And we're looking at this because there is residential development being considered in this area. So we are requesting to remove these connections to Westlake Houston Parkway. First of all, because they both cross Caney Creek, which is that waterway you can see on the map. And Caney Creek is a 50-foot wide waterway, and it has 600 feet in width of a 100-year floodplain on either side. And almost entire, almost the entirety of these crossings are within the 500-year floodplain. And there's also potential wetlands in this area. And we also believe that Community Drive is on there as a mistake, because it was removed from the MTFP in 2018, and then it reappeared in 2019. But we haven't, we didn't see any requests to have this added on there. And also, the construction of the Grand Parkway directly to the north makes these connections unnecessary. And they're also requesting to reclassify Baptist Encampment as a minor collector. And the street is fronted by large single-family lots, and with the removal of these connections, it would function as more of a local street than about, than a, than what it's currently classified as. So, next slide please. So here we have a map showing more in detail what it looks like with these two connections. As you can see, there's Caney Creek running down the middle, and there would be a minimum needed of 600 feet of bridge spans to cross Caney Creek, probably more. So then the lighter blue is the 100-year floodplain. So you can see that the 100-year floodplain takes up a lot of that area as well. And then the green hatch is potential jurisdictional wetlands. And there's also already existing ponds, and an existing sand pit operation. So there's just a lot going on in this area that would mean that there'd need to be two very long bridges to make these two connections to Westlake Houston Parkway. Next slide please. And then here we have snippets of the MTFP from 2017, 2018, and 2019. So on the 2017 MTFP, you can see Community Drive going from west to east. And then you can see that in 2018, it was removed from the MTFP, so it's not there any longer. And then in 2019, you can see just the little segment of Community Drive put back there. So that's why we believe that it's a mistake that it's on the map, because we also looked and we didn't find any requests to have this added back on there. Next slide please.
Take it a minute to move, let's see. Seems like it's frozen right this page, I'm so sorry, see what I can... There it goes, sorry about that.
Okay, no worries. Um, and then, so just in summary, we're requesting to remove the connections of Baptist Encampment, or requesting to reclassify Baptist Encampment Road as a minor collector, and then remove the Baptist Encampment Road and Community Drive connections, Westlake Houston Parkway.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I happen to be timing you, 18, 19, 21, 22, 23, 24, that's about, happened to be about six minutes. During the workshop, you have as much time as you want or need. A, during, as you already know, during the formal meeting, I think it's three minutes you'll have, so just an FYI.
Right, yes, I remember that.
There was, Victoria was a caller who joined us that I thought would be joining this particular session. She has family property in the area. I don't know if you heard her talking during the main room. Did you hear her come in Paige?
No, I didn't.
Okay, I'm sorry that I didn't hear her name, or, her name was Victoria. She joined the meeting and was trying to navigate into the meeting. She has family property that is in this area, so she said she was interested in what is, was going on. But I don't see her or hear her having joined the meeting, so that's just an FYI. If we can find out anything from Sharon, for example, I'm, we'll get that information in case she'd like to contact you and vice versa.
Okay.
I'm here, hello, can you hear me?
Thank you.
You.
This is Victoria, I had to call in because I couldn't, the link wouldn't let me get in, so I just dialed the number.
Victoria, thank you for joining us, my name is Teresa, I'm with staff. The Ms. Paige LaPestra with EHRA is the applicant, and she'll be happy to talk you through the proposal, and then answer your questions.
Okay, thank you.
So right now, I think you're the only one in this particular breakout room, so the floor is yours. Paige, would you like to proceed?
Sure, Victoria, are you able to see anything, or are you just, just on the phone listening in?
I'm just listening.
Okay, okay, so I'll try to, try to explain it without you being able to see anything. And so, basically, we're making two requests in this area. Currently, the, the major thoroughfare and freeway plan is proposing two connections from Baptist Encampment Road connecting to Westlake Houston Parkway. And we are requesting to have those proposed connections removed, primarily because they are crossing Caney Creek, which is a waterway that's 50 feet wide, and there's also flood, so there's 50 feet of waterway, and then 600 feet in width of 100-year floodplain, and also these connections are most entirely within the 500-year floodplain. And there's also potential wetlands in this area. So we're requesting to have these connections removed, just because they would require two really long bridges, and just because of the environmental impacts, and also because Grand Parkway has been built directly to the north of these connections, so there's already connectivity in the area. And, and then, we also believe that one of the connections is just on the map by a mistake, because in the past, it was on there, and then it was removed, and then it showed back up, so we believe that it is not supposed to be on the map in actuality. And then, we're also requesting to reclassify Baptist Encampment Road as a minor collector. And we just believe that it's more reflective of the actual function of the road, because it's fronted by large single-family lots. And by not connecting it to Westlake Houston Parkway, it wouldn't serve as like regional connection, it would just function as a local street. So I hope that makes sense, without being able to see anything, but please let me know if you have any questions.
Oh, yes, I understood exactly what you said, and when I read the letter, that's kind of what I got from it, that it wasn't a necessary connection, but I wanted to just make sure before we started doing any building for there, that, that, that there was not going to be a bridge that's going to be placed there.
Right, so that's what we're, we're requesting, is to not build a bridge across Caney Creek.
Okay, okay, that's, that's, that's all I need, that's what I was looking to find out, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for calling in.
Victoria, we saw your phone number on the chat, it's 346-255-5763. Is that a number we can reach you on if you'd like any further outreach?
Yes, yes, that's my cell phone, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Victoria, are you able to type anything in the chat?
Uh, no.
She's on phone.
Oh, okay, okay, I just jumped in, I apologize.
Sure.
Let me make sure that I'm touching base with everybody else, is everything okay here guys?
I think we're good, yeah.
Thank you for holding the, the prescription, not prescription, the presentation up for us, Teresa, I appreciate it. I'm gonna go to another room and just kind of leave you here since you've got the presentation background, okay?
Sure.
Thank you.
Paige, would you like to contact Victoria, maybe mail her or anything, do you think that would be helpful? If, Victoria, I, you commented before Paige got on the call in the main room, that I think you commented that your family had property in the area, so I don't know if there's any more specifics you would like from the applicant, from Paige?
I'm sorry, this is Victoria's sister, Victoria just got off the call, so let me try to get her back on so that she can give additional information.
Okay.
Okay, give me a second.
No problem. Paige, would you like your business number shared with Victoria if she?
Yes, yes, we can share that with her.
Go ahead and type it into the chat and I'll read it off of there if you would.
Okay, one moment.
Yes, give her a few seconds, she's calling back in.
Oh, no problem, thank you.
Yeah, because she would know, she would have more information about the building out there than what I would, I was just on the phone listening in, so that I would have additional information with her as well.
You're welcome to join, thank you for participating.
Okay, I sent my phone number and also my email address.
Okay. Paige?
Victoria?
Yes, this is, I'm back.
Thank you for coming back for just a minute, you were, you were trying to leave, and I thought to ask if you would want to get anything mailed to you by Paige, or anything that would help answer any, any other questions, because you were on phone and maybe not able to see everything? Is that something you'd like to have her contact information?
Yes.
Paige's direct phone number is 713-337-7495.
Okay.
Is email convenient for you Victoria?
It is.
Okay, let me rattle off her email for, for you.
Okay.
At symbol, EHRA dot team.
Okay, it was P-L-I-P-E-P-S-K-A at EHRA dot team?
That's right.
Okay.
If you want to pop Paige an email, and maybe describe where your family property is, I think you said you had local property, then maybe she can make sure the information is relevant to your specific interest. And that way, we'll also make sure that we got, you've got her email right, and we communicate it to you, so we make sure you two can get connected.
Okay, I will do that.
All right, thanks for joining us again.
I definitely, thank you, I do have a question, hold on Victoria, Victoria, I do have a question. So I know that on the first, in the first room, the guy said that the last public questions will be submitted by July the 7th, is that correct?
That's right.
And so, any questions that we have after that, there, it doesn't, it won't matter.
Not quite, what happens is staff collects all the public comments by that date, in time to catalog them, get them prepared for the planning commission to see all the comments, group them, et cetera. So those, when all the advanced comments will be considered, and anything in writing will be presented to the planning commission. After that, you're welcome to attend the planning commission meeting, either in person or virtually, and be, you can sign up to be a speaker there, you can also voice comments there. So that date was just for the advanced comments that will be packaged for the planning commission to get them all.
Okay, and then, when it comes down to an actual decision being made on what to do?
Yes.
Will that happen on planning day?
Yes, what will happen next, the, the recommendation or the action meeting, when the planning commission will consider the recommendations and make a formal action, is on September 21st at 1 o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah, we have those too.
Okay.
Before that, there will be a public hearing meeting, July 27th at 1 o'clock, and that's what time the comments are asked before that meeting, so again, so they can be packaged and presented to the planning commission. You're welcome to attend both of those meetings, either of those meetings or none of those meetings, it's completely up to you. Does that, does that answer your question, Victoria?
Yes, now, I have another question, just in the event that, you know, this is, you, we go, we go back, everything goes back to the planning meeting, is there any reason why they would not take it off of the major thoroughfare project planning?
Yeah, that's a good question, we never say never. What will happen by the recommendation meeting on the 21st, staff will make a recommendation to the planning commission about what, what staff's research has found. What you can do is you can call the, the transportation team, maybe right before September 21st, and find out what their recommendation is, and then you know, you know, what staff is going to ask the commission to do. The reality is, the commission can make whatever action they choose, they usually are very open to hearing what staff has to say, but also what the public has to say. In your particular case, where you don't want those bridges, what I'm hearing is that you are in support of this proposal to remove Baptist Encampment Road from the major thoroughfare plan. And so, since that's what you want, you might even choose to write a letter saying, "I support this recommendation to remove the roads, I live in the area," or whatever you actually want to say, and you can email it to our office so that those comments are part of the record. That's because you, you don't, from what I understand, you don't want these roads to be built, and you don't want the bridges to go in.
Correct, correct.
Yeah, seriously, to help with your position, an email to the Planning Department at HoustonTX.gov would be helpful. We'd put that in the file, and we will, we will say that, you know, we had one comment from the public, at least, you know, at this point, I only know of yours, and you are supportive of the proposal, that is helpful for the planning commission to hear that. Would you like me to give you our email, the, the planning department's email, a little slower so you can jot it down, I rattled it off pretty quickly. Victoria?
I'm sorry, can you just put it in the chat and I'll take a picture of it?
Oh, sure.
For Victoria, she's out of town, so her car probably dropped.
Okay, is this her sister?
Yeah, yes ma'am, it is, sorry, I have a one-year-old at home, and so I'm trying to keep down on the trying.
Oh, so some, I hear another young resident wants to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it is, Planning Department at HoustonTX.gov, and the transportation staff.
Teresa, this is Richard, was there anything for Public Works, or am I good on this one?
Richard, thank you for joining from Public Works, we have one member of the public, Ms. Victoria and her sister, listening on. They are, they, have you been, have you been hearing they're in support of this proposal, they don't want any bridges or roads in their, in their area? So other than that?
Okay.
We're good, thanks for checking in, Richard, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Victoria's sister, what is your name? I'm just calling you Victoria's sister.
It's Felicia, I'm sorry.
Felicia, okay.
Yes.
Oh, let me hit, enter to get this to go into the chat. That was our Houston Public Works engineering representative, just wanting to find out any other concerns, who, he sounds like he's popping around to all 10 of the meeting rooms to answer any questions, so that's, that's, that's popping out.
Okay, Victoria says she tried to call back in, and it wasn't letting her go back in, so let me find out if she has any other questions.
Okay.
Okay. Mama, I have, hold on, oh, you don't have anymore, okay, she says she doesn't have any more questions.
Right, well, you've got Paige's phone number as well, if you have a direct question for her. Paige is the applicant who's making the request and has all the technical details of her proposal.
Okay, um, not at this time, what we'll do is we'll, hold on, we'll come together and we'll talk, and then if we have any questions or concerns, we'll reach out to Paige.
Super, and that's in the chat too, as well as the planning department contacts, so you have options there.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thanks for joining. I see Brad's on the call, I haven't said hello to Brad in forever and a day, hi Brad, nice to see your name.
Hello, yeah, good to hear from you again.
I know. I ride by that Aberdeen Trails entry monument that you designed, because it's real round the corner from my house, and I think, I know who did that, that is so, super cool, it's one of my favorite subdivision entry monuments ever.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm super happy to hear that.
Yep, yep, it's, it's just so graceful, it has certainly stood, stayed with the test of time, because it's been a couple of years since that went up. But we're not going to talk about how many years that was, right?
Of course, no, no, no.
Okay, I see Azul Paralis might have joined in and out, she's from our department, as is Brandon Mosley in and out, so I'm not seeing anybody else. There's the three of us in the meeting right now, so not seeing anybody else. People can come in and out all the way up till 7 o'clock, so we have about 15 more minutes. Paige, have you worked on major thoroughfare amendment requests before?
This is my first one.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I don't think I've, I don't think if I've helped with any others, but I think this is the first time. So it's good experience, for sure.
Yeah, well, I'm glad that you're not, for the first one, that you're not inundated with a zillion questions and disgruntled. And the fact that you have a member of the public supportive of your proposal is very helpful.
That was good to hear.
I don't know if you want to reach out and answer her questions and ask for that letter of support. The commission likes to see support, staff would probably include it as well, but you might want to consider that.
That's a good point. Yeah, I got her phone number down, so probably give her a call.
Yeah, well, I didn't think to ask for her email, I just gave her yours, so. Brad, do I look the same?
Oh, yes, yes, of course.
Yeah, that was a loaded question, you're very smart to answer that diplomatically. Brad, I vaguely remember you've been involved with major thoroughfare amendments in, in prior years. Is that, is that a true recollection?
It is. Yeah, we did one for Tavola for, for Villa Principale in Aragostay about, had to be at least seven, six, seven years ago now, so. That was the last time I've done one. I've done, I've done multiple ones in other counties since then, but not in Houston.
Yeah, right. Yeah, the major thoroughfare amendments do take time in Houston. It really is a full year cycle from January start, then meetings, you know, throughout the summer and then action by September and then getting the maps changed and city council to adopt it. I mean, really is quite a protracted effort. Sometimes we'll get applicants who, you know, used to the two-week cycle for plating, like, oh, I'm getting a major thoroughfare amendment in time to plat this in a month. It's like, well, it may not work like that way.
Yeah, we had one, another tract looking at one and it's like, oh, you missed the 2023 cycle, so it's probably looking, you know, 18 months before we, you know, change stuff around for you. So it is definitely a long process.
Right. Sharon, I see that you may have jumped in. We have had one public inquire, Richard Smith, joined us as well, but we'll stay on the line till seven in case someone does come because it's, you know, the whole, the whole hour. I didn't go back to check room B. Have you got that covered or you need me to check in there?
No, no, no. Please stay here with Paige. I think you're fine. I'm gonna go now and finish up in room B. So I probably will not come back. Just remember to return, you know, return the recording off. And if you have any questions or anything that I need to address, let me know and I'll be happy to help. If anybody is, and you will, Teresa, you know, if we can get their name and email, whatever, so we can reach out to them, that's very helpful and I'm gonna go make sure that B is okay.
Okay, thanks, Sharon.
Thank you. No problem. Bye. Thank you, Paige.
Thank you, Sharon.
Yeah, with Sharon's comment, you might want to turn in that letter of support.
Yeah, that's a really good idea. I'll, yeah, follow up with them and see if they'll send in a letter.
And I don't know of her sister Felicia, but also, I just don't know. At least it's not opposition though, that's for sure.
Right.
I wish we knew exactly what, what particular location she's at. I tell you what, I'm gonna look through your slides and see if I can guess where she might be. Yeah, since she couldn't see, I didn't even want to ask her where her property is, but she did say her family has property in the area, so. That might be an interesting thing to learn. And we didn't get her last name. Frankly, that would have been another good idea to look on HCAT and see where her property is. Remind me how big the notice area is. Do you, do you remember that, Paige? How far out?
I can't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, yeah, because if she got a letter, then she's within the notice area. That's probably abandoned. I don't know whether it's like 200 feet off of the proposed area or, you know, so it might be interesting to know where her property, her family property is in relation to the proposal. But she definitely didn't want the bridges. She sure said that loud and clear.
Right. My guess would be off of, somewhere off of Baptist Encampment because those are really the only smaller residential areas or residential lots in that area because everything else are pretty big tracts of land.
Oh, okay, interesting.
So that'd be my guess, but.
Yeah. Oh, I have a question for you. What is driving your amendment request? Do you have a landowner that doesn't, wants to develop something or doesn't want to develop something?
Right, there's a landowner who's considering residential development in this area.
Okay. This could make a huge difference to develop this area. Do I remember that sand pits can go away pretty easily, relatively speaking?
Oh, I don't know about that.
Yeah, it's, it can be challenging, you know, they, you know, take a lot of grading considerations that, you know. We've worked on a couple of EHR in the past, but generally speaking, it's not the most ideal track to try and develop.
I see, I see. It's a pretty, it looks like a pretty large area where the sand pit is functioning right now, but not having to put in a bridge or two is probably a bigger thing. But the sand pit seems pretty, seems pretty large. How close are we to the ETJ up here? Just, I'm just curious. It's not a loaded question. I'm just kind of wondering myself. The ETJ is pretty north of Grand Parkway in this area?
I'm trying to think of it off the top of my head because it's in the northeastern portion.
Yeah, I think it surprisingly goes, you know, you know, five or six more miles north of here and east of here. I was, it's kind of shocking how far out it goes, but.
Oh, wow. You know, just for the heck of it, I'm gonna, if you don't mind, I'd like to see if I could pull up a Google map or Google Earth and maybe we can look, fly over that looking. I don't do much of that kind of, I don't do that often, but I did pull it up and I thought, maybe I will give it a try. This is, yeah, here it is. Y'all still seeing my screen? Well, this isn't gonna have the ETJ up here, but. So right now along Baptist Camp, Encampment right now is a couple of businesses. Is there, is there an actual campground in this area? Again, these are just, I'm just kind of making conversation in our time. This is not, nothing loaded about my questions. I'm just kind of, kind of asking generally.
Oh, I do see a camp on the bottom right-hand portion of your screen, but I don't know if that's why it's named that, but.
I did some digging on it a while back and I think it was named Baptist Encampment because there's a group of settlers who, you know, kind of created a community around here some time ago and I think they must have been Baptist or, I don't know.
Interesting.
That's kind of how it got the name.
See, I see over here on the Google Earth, Camp Holy Wild. That's a funny name. So the, there's a Prairie View Nursing College temporarily closed. Oh, that's interesting. Wow, boy, that'd be a hard school to find, my goodness. You're not gonna have any drive-by students pick that one up. You're gonna have to drive all the way over here.
Yeah, not good for marketing.
Really. Affordable security. Oh, wow, you've got a nature center over here and looks like a lot. What is all this? Do you know? It looks like a.
The Lake Houston Wilderness Park.
Oh, wow.
And so I think that's one of the big reasons why that community drive was removed in the first place is because it was going through the wilderness park.
Wow. What a nice place to live backing up to a park like this. That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Joe Turner Nature Center. I guess he's our, the name sounds real familiar. I wonder if he's a former parks director. His name sounds real familiar. It's got a nature center named after him. My goodness, look at all this. Oh, I, I've been meaning to come up to this park sometime.
I've heard that it's nice.
Looks huge and beautiful. My goodness gracious. Five, okay, there's Five Mile Road. There were some projects off of Five Mile Road. I remember their planning variance with Five Mile Road a couple of years ago. I don't remember who ended up happening with it, but it's down in that area. Wow, that's a lot of. Dana's Dovermans and Whiskey Throttle Repair. There we go. It's 6:57 PM, so we're just literally winding this down. I really want to thank you both for making yourself available for the public to come, learn about the project and get their questions answered. I'm really, I am glad you had one inquire and I'm glad for you that the person, the family sounds supportive of what you're proposing. Do you have any questions for me as staff member about your next steps or anything else?
Um, not that I can think of at the moment, but I'll reach out if I have any other questions.
Super. Be happy to be a resource for you. Of course, Sharon Moses Burnside is your primary resource on the transportation team. So she'll probably get your questions answered most effectively, but if I can help, I'm available as well, Paige.
Great. Thank you so much, Teresa, and thank you for doing the slideshow for us.
Yeah, I'm glad I was able to make that work.
Yes.
So two minutes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be technical and then not disconnect for another two minutes, so. We, I have 6:59. I did hear David ask us to go back to the main room to sign out from there. So if you'd like to do that, go back to the main room. It's seven o'clock. I'm going to adjourn this meeting and close off this recording. I'll be back in the main room with you all. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thanks, Teresa.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Honey, I got about a few more minutes.